All right, welcome and good morning. It is now nine-ish. And we'll call this meeting to order. Madam Clerk, please call the first item.
Approve the minutes of the regular meeting of July 16th, 2024.
Motion to approve?
Yes.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, any opposed? Okay. Madam Clerk?
Consent agenda items one through 12.
Are there any items to be pulled from the consent agenda for discussion?
I would like to pull item four.
Okay. Any other items?
Madam Vice Mayor with a motion to approve.
Minus item four.
Minus item number four.
Yes.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, Councilmember Rosa?
Yes, I just have a couple of questions. If we can have somebody up here just to talk us through this. It's a bunch of five-year options added to the contract. Leads to 40 years. Is this the market rate, 3% a year? Is that like an acceptable rate for something like this?
That is my understanding. Yes, it's been subject to negotiations in order for them to justify their capital costs. That's why they ask for the minimum. And also for limited conditions for termination.
Okay, all right. Well, I just appreciate that. My questions are answered.
Any other questions?
I did some research on that, too. And the inflation rate for the last 40 years was about 3%. So.
Right in line.
I had the same question.
Yep.
So, yeah.
All right, well, birds of a feather, right?
I know, right?
Yep, I move that we approve agenda item number four.
Okay.
Consent agenda item number four.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Awesome. Madam Clerk, next item?
Board of Bids and Contracts, dated July 22nd, 2024.
Good morning, Vice Mayor, City Council, Charles Law, Department of Finance. Board of Bids and Contracts convened July 22nd, 2024 for the following. For engineering, we have Wheatland Street, Red Rock Street, Cowboy Street to serve Lions Gate Edition for Pearson Construction LLC in the amount of $910,249.72. This will be subject to your approval of revised engineer's estimate and budget authorization. We have the 2024 sanitary sewer rehabilitation Phase A cured-in-place pipe for Institute Form Technologies USA LLC in the amount of $367,874.74. We have water distribution system to serve Meadow Lake Beach Second Edition for Mies Construction Incorporated in the amount of $167,391. And for purchasing, we have the hauling or logistics of salt for Roberto Vera Trucking LLC in the amount of $133,275 for aggregate total. And this will be a contracted term of one year with two one-years to renew. This is how to become a vendor with the city. These are open requests for proposals out on the street today. And I'd be happy to try to answer your questions. I recommend your approval.
Any questions? I see none. Anyone want to make a motion?
I move that we receive and file the report, approve the contracts, and authorize the necessary signatures.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Josh. Madam Clerk, please call the next item.
Councilmember appointments and comments.
Madam Vice Mayor, with an appointment, I appoint Stephanie Jaeger to the District Four Advisory Board.
Anybody else? I move to approve your appointment. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Council comments?
I have one.
Councilmember Johnson?
Thanks, Vice Mayor. I just want to highlight, I reluctantly supported the automobile event today. But I would really like to encourage the applicant in the future to get things turned in in a timely manner. I believe the agreement this year was for January. That did not happen. And what we continue to see every year is businesses being impacted. And it's always a last-minute notification. Some of the businesses that will be impacted this year are going to lose a quarter of their sales for the week because of this event. And because the street is closed from 8:00 till 4:00 when it starts. That doesn't have to be the case. And if better communication happened from the applicant to the businesses where they want to host this event, they could work out some better options. So I'm disappointed to see that this is again happening. This is, I think, the third year in a row that we continue to see this with this event. And just want to encourage better communication with the applicant and the businesses. That way, some form of compromise can be generated in a timely manner before July so that they aren't impacted as much as they are.
I completely agree. I know Councilmember Glascock and I worked really closely with Josh. And the goalposts just kept moving by the hour. So I feel like, Bob, do you have any other suggestions? We tried to hold them accountable and get the plan in January. Do you have any suggestions on how we can make this better moving forward?
Soon as the event is finished, give everybody maybe a week for a breather. But then we're going to sit down with Josh and maybe Representative of his Board. We, he asked about a site earlier this year that actually I think would have minimal impact on businesses and would be a great downtown location. So we're going to work on whether or not we can make that possible for next year. And that would be a win-win. And we could do the planning, city controls, a lot of the property that would be involved. So we could do a lot of that on the front end.
Excellent, thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Johnson. Anyone else have any comments? I have my District Six coffee on Saturday at Botanica. And school board member Hazel Stabler and the new executive director for Botanica will be there in the Lotus Room. And we will have delicious breakfast burritos. So everyone is welcome to come. Also Convoy of Hope. Does it start at eight or nine, do you know? There's 10 different locations. We will make sure that we get that out on all of our different social medias. There's a big tennis tournament at Riverside Tennis on both Saturday and Sunday. I think that's all that I can think of. Don't be jealous.
I might just make a comment. I've mentioned several times from the bench, the National League of Cities selected, which taught to be one of seven cities in the nation for a task force on childcare and especially how it applies to entrepreneurs. Childcare providers are entrepreneurs, especially when they're home providers. And on Saturday, part of our, four of our goals, one of them being to have a childcare summit. And it'll be an opportunity for childcare providers, especially home providers, to have courses on entrepreneurism. So we're not going to teach them or talk to them about being better educators, but how to be better entrepreneurs and business owners, because they indeed are. And then we'll have them stay, but we'll also invite in, we have a special session for employers to talk about the childcare tax credit. The state of Kansas allocates $3 million annually for the childcare tax credit program. And last year, only 100,000, sorry, 100,000 of the 3 million was utilized. So super excited that we have so many providers who are interested in learning more, but then also employers. I think we're close to 40 employers coming on a Saturday to learn more about this very important topic. So I'll give you an update, not next week, because it's the fifth Tuesday, but the week after. But just really excited to keep raising the awareness of the importance of childcare in our community as it applies to workforce and economic development. So wish us luck on Saturday.
Yes, good luck, and thank you very much.
I did just think of one more thing. Just want to encourage everybody to come to our evening meeting on August 8th, 6:00 here. We'll present the budget again. So if you have thoughts or hopes for us, please be there. 6:00 council meeting in the evening. Tell your friends, bring them too.
Awesome, thank you. I move to adjourn the meeting. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. City manager?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. We have two items for you on our workshop today. The first one is an update of activities that we have going on in our Recreation Division of Parks and Recreation. We have done this in the past at our, after an agenda review, but there are so many items we wanted to discuss today. It's even more appropriate to do it through a workshop. So with that, I believe I'm turning it over to Reggie Davidson.
Good morning. Have an opportunity to kind of share some of the things that we're doing now with Parks and Rec and the activities that we have going throughout the city and give an opportunity at the end as well. So if there's any questions about the things that we have going on, we'd be more than happy to answer those questions. Want to acknowledge we have some of our team that's in the back there, Troy Hauptman, of course, and some other of the team in the back that's back there that's worked on this presentation to present to you guys today on the things that we have going on in our department. So first of all, I'm not sure if you guys are aware that we launched a mobile app on August, I mean, on April the 1st of this year. And we're up to 2,283 actual downloads for users for the app itself. So encourage you guys, if you haven't already, to download it to be able to follow what we're doing with the services that we have. Also gives push notifications for activities that are taking place so you can get real-time access to services that are taking place in the community as we move forward with programs that we offer. So I'm going to start off with aquatics and some of the things that we do in the community. Sure you guys know that we actually went online and started doing some of our pool memberships and admissions through the app, being able to do that electronically. We also have over 400 swim classes that are available to the community actually offered at our six pools that we have. And one of the big things that we did this year that we partnered with Red Cross. And part of that, we're able to offer some scholarships for swim lessons for the community at reduced cost, as well as do some instructional training for our lifeguard certification and working in conjunction with the school district on some of those things that we were able to offer to their PE teachers and some of the students there as well through a partnership we have with them. And one of the things you'll notice through it is that we, partnership is very vital to what we do and the services that we deliver in the community. So you see a lot of that in what we deliver. So athletics, it's the next one that we actually have up. Our NFL flag program started out in 2020 with 100 participants. And this past year, we had over 400 participants in the program. So a lot of good growth in that program, a lot of interest from the community. Our Wichita Junior Football League, that you'll notice that we just started a new partnership with the school district that's starting this fall that we'll be using their facilities to host our games on-site. So the young people have opportunity to play on turf fields, have scoreboards that are there. Some of them have press boxes where we can actually give them a really good experience with participating in the programs that we offer. Another big thing that we're doing quite a bit more with is our Miracle League program. Our team has did a really good job of partnering with the community and expanding those services that we have as well. So some of those partners that we work with that are really vital to what we do is Air This Hope, Down Syndrome Society, Starkey, as well as with USD with their Special Education Department, where we have an opportunity to actually go in and speak with those young people there to get them involved in the programs that we have available. So I think a key thing that we need to, wanted to point out as well is that participating in sports and after-school program helps with risky behavior for young people. So it shows that one in five kids who are alone and unsupervised end up getting involved in something that they shouldn't be getting involved in. So we're making a concentrated effort to make sure we get young people involved in those constructive things to keep them out of trouble. So our camps, it's another big piece of what we offer to the community. We've made a big effort to work with our homeschool community with offering some homeschool learning hub at Boston Rec Center where we actually work with those individual homeschool groups and offer classes there at the rec center. We've also expanded where we're hosting quite a bit more of their tennis programming at the tennis center, where they actually come on-site and take lessons there, have some of their competitions that they actually do on-site as well. Our summer discovery program is continuing to grow as well as our summer activity camp. A big piece of what we do in the community as well is our Latski program down at Colvin. And that ties into some of the same things that we're looking at with some of the national statistics that we show that between 2:00 and 6:00 p.m. is a really big time where kids are unsupervised, where they get involved in gang-related activity, other things in the community that are not constructive. So we're putting a big effort into working with the school district there in Colvin and providing that service free of charge to that community as part of the funding that we get through housing. So our classes, we offer quite a bit, quite a few classes that are all available in the community. So you can see that we have 475 feet-based classes that we offered in 2023 with a 71% of those classes that it's a success rate on it. I think a big key thing that you'll see that we offered 76 new classes that were successful in 2023. So we're looking at ways that we can evaluate the programs that we actually have and getting community feedback and doing our surveys to see what is the community wanting to see and offering those programs we don't actually participate in. So that's one of the things that we implemented as part of our CAPR standards is that we start implementing surveys every quarter to gather information from our participants to see what they want to see offered and evaluating that and expanding programs or eliminating programs to make sure that we are meeting their needs. Pickleball continues to be really popular. We are growing and growing more at the tennis center. Also offer more programs in the community that we're actually doing. We're also working with our tennis professionals and we're offering some pickleball and tennis lessons with our summer discovery and our summer activity camps during the summer as well. Another big piece of what we do is, is community events. We had over 63 community events this past year with over 89,000 people in attendance. We have a lot of partners, again, that help with that, whether that's partners who help host the sites that we have, events, or deliver programs that we have, or either sponsorship for people providing in-kind or financial donation to help offset some of our costs. And our event facilitator, Isaac, is here. Handles all of our community event applications for the entire city. So he does a really good job of managing that process and had over 307 applications last year. And that involves him actually looking at site plans that are available there, working with police and fire that are necessary to make sure that we have coverage that we have there and the community itself. Making sure we're doing the things that we need to do to make it as convenient as possible for us to actually deliver those services to the community.
Hey, Reggie, real quick. How many of those applications get approved? I'm just curious.
So it actually shows here, Isaac may be able to add more specifics on that than he's here, I believe, in the room. But I know that the majority of them, if I'm not mistaken, Isaac. Yeah, so I don't know that number offhand. When he's back in, I'm sure, I don't know if Troy may have that information as well. So.
All of them?
All of them.
Okay. All right, well, appreciate it.
So I know it's very, you know, he does a really good job of making sure he's monitoring those applications and following it through the entire process so that he gets those notifications, he follows through with police and fire and those other things to make sure we have what's needed from insurance to the maps that's required for and actually the layout for those locations and road closures and things as well. It's part of what he helps coordinate as part of that process. So our Evolve magazine is something that we have in place that we actually manage that process for the city. And that's have all of our programs that are in place through Parks and Rec, the library, as well as through cultural arts that are available. So we do quite a bit of distribution in the community. We print about 10,000 guides quarterly. We also manage the mail-out for those to the community. So we have an option for people to actually go online and subscribe whether it be mailed to their home. And also we have it in 127 local businesses throughout the community in our city facilities. And the Parks and Rec Department manages that process and getting it out as far as covering the cost for it, as well as designating how that's distributed to the community as well through our team. Well, leads next into our parks and what we're doing there. One of the things that a lot of people may not realize is that Parks and Rec manages the Kansas Wildlife exhibit, which was the original zoo here in the community. So we have a team that's there on-site that are, have animal ambassadors that are there, take care of our animals that are there on-site, do community events if they're on-site, have noon feeding times that individuals can come out and learn more about the actual animals that are there being cared for on-site by our team. We hosted over 41 events in 2023 at Napster Park. Our athletic fields at South Lakes are continuing to be busy. And Watson Park still continues to be a destination park for us where we host a variety of different events that you'll see. It's kind of listed on the right-hand side there. As well as. So we also have 87 playgrounds that are there in the community, 12 wildlife habitat areas, as well as we have chess tables that are in the community as part of the partnership that we've done with, as well, to be able to have that available for the community to enjoy as well. And Great Plains Nature Centers is another partnership that we have with the state, federal government, and the Friends Group there. We provide a lot of different programs that are on-site there for the community to enjoy as well. So that leads into our recreation with the next activities that we actually have, over 100 miles of bike paths, lanes, and other bicycle facilities that we have in the community that are available for us to enjoy. We have affordable monthly memberships for, for our rec centers, for a fitness center that's on-site. We have our QR trails. And another big thing that we started is our partnership with RIT Fund, where we have the kiosks that are available for the kayaks, as well as the lawn games that we just launched last week as well. Our senior recreation is another area that we continue to grow and expand. We have our Golden Age Club that are there. We have dedicated times at our rec centers where individuals can go in and actually walk there. And then we also work real closely with providing a lot of active adult classes for 55 and older community. Our rentals, so we have over 70 rental fields, baseball, softball, football, cricket fields that are available. Golf courts at Auburn Hills host a lot of weddings and special events. And our community facilities are really busy as well. So our seven rec centers does the same thing, where we have opportunity for individuals to rent classrooms and gym space there. And our newest venue, the Seasons venue, has been really active. We don't have a weekend that's available through the end of the year for anyone that's actually rent. And our pools are also real active. We're doing a lot of birthday parties and other things that are taking place by the community as well. So we did over 10,000 rentals in 2023 and generated over $500,000 in revenue from those rentals. In kind of conclusion, we think recreation is essential to the community. With a lot of the diverse programs that we have and we provide to the community helps make an impact on the services that are available and improves the quality of life for our residents. The economic volatility that we actually have there as well with the tourism, as well as the economic growth that we can see that take place there. Kansas Rec and Park Association actually just completed a opportunity to be able to show the economic impact for rec services. And that's a tool that we're going to be working with to show how what we're delivering to the community and how it makes an economic impact on the actual community itself. Another big piece that I know that's really important for us is how crucial a role it is in crown prevention. So a lot of the programs that we offer with our after-school program, our youth athletics that we have, provide a safe environment for our young people to actually be engaged in something positive to keep them away from some of the risky behavior. I know that that's been a hot topic for us in the community now with some of the things that we're seeing. And we're doing more and more of those things to try to help be proactive to prevent some of those things from taking place in the community. And part of that is our partnership with the school district, with getting those young people engaged and setting some of those expectations, not only with them being athletes, but how they can also make better choices, be better students, where we can prepare them for life overall. And finally, it's kind of fitting that July is Parks and Rec Month. And the theme for this year is where you belong. And I think our team does a really good job recreating a space and an environment where we belong here in Wichita for our residents to be able to have a good experience with participating in a wide variety of programs and services that we offer. So I'll stand if you guys have any questions for me.
Thank you, Reggie, for the presentation. Huge advocate for Park and Rec and worked significantly with Park and Rec at the city of Wichita before I was on council. One question that I do have, we've had a director's report on Striker Multi-Sports Complex before, but is, are there numbers in terms of numbers of activities and spectators and all of that woven into this at all, or is it considered completely separate?
I'm not aware of that. I don't know, Troy has more information that he may be able to share on that.
So what Reggie provided today was all the activities that we provide, that we actually, actually manage. We have tons of partners, we have so many different partners, we couldn't list them all. And there's another area right there that we really impact the community is all of our partnerships. So for us to go back and get that information from 200 different partners and bring that information back would take us a while. But Lake 42 is another example. We don't monitor all of their activities, but if we did, we'd have some great numbers to share.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, just a couple real quick. And I don't know if you can answer this. Do we have a similar app for other departments around the city? Or are you guys leading the way on that one?
I think we're leading the way on that. I know the city as a whole has an app that they have that could get access to the city's website. But I think we may be the only department at this point that has an app. And we're probably, I would venture to say, one of two other.
We have two apps in our department.
Yeah, so two of them, yeah. So we have the golf Wichita app as well as the Parks and Rec app that comes in. I would venture to say that we're probably one of the few agencies throughout the US that has an app that's dedicated for our parks department as well. So I would say we're on the leading edge for that.
Are we going to have apps for other departments as well?
We actually were hoping that we would have an app that would involve all of the departments that are in the Evolve program. But it turned out that it was probably more convenient for our public, easier to use to have this, the app that's tied for park programming. Jim can probably talk a little bit about that as well. We are exploring other options, but I don't know that anybody is close or, you know, definitely not close to coming up with an app similar to this.
So this app can expand. And I think what we're looking at is really kind of focusing on the foundation with Parks and Recreation. And then we'll work with some of the other departments to see if we can engage them in adding their activities in this app as well. We just had a conversation yesterday regarding the Evolve magazine, the catalog that we have. And I think we're going to spend a little bit more time as a group looking at opportunities to make improvements for exposure for all of our departments.
Yeah, I know the, the app we're using for potholes and MABCD reporting and whatnot is pretty popular in my district so far. So, yeah, any way we can expand that to other departments is definitely something I think would help a lot of people out there as far as using and navigating the city and our different departments and things that we offer.
I'm glad you brought that app up, by the way, See Click Fix. We're going to have a report back to the council, hopefully in the near future, regarding some of the initial activity, just to give you an idea of the kinds of complaints we're getting. And I think we may be able to pin it down by location, general heat map kind of information.
Appreciate that. Is this app, can it be configured to include other people's periodicals being broadcast on it? Do you have the magazine, Evolve magazine, is it just Evolve that we can put on there? Or if we have some other, you know, I specifically thinking of Yeeb and their newsletter that they put out, it's mostly to try and keep kids off of fit and all and such in our high schools. So would that be an option to partner with an organization like that to have their magazines periodically ran through the app as well?
So not being technical enough to be able to see what that would look like, but it's definitely something that we can consider if it's something that's going to be a great grid for the community to get a message out that falls along with what we want. I'm sure it's something that we could look into and explore further.
Okay, I appreciate that. Okay, I appreciate that. Um, and just another comment or two here. We did have summer camp, a little cookout at the Colvin Center just a couple of weeks ago, and it's always great to just see all the kids out there. You know, kind of helps buoy you a little bit going through the process that we go through to see the impact that it has. And I, I think I heard about half of the kids out there at the summer camp are, um, foster kids or are in DCF, the system. So I do appreciate you guys partnering with them and making sure that every child has a chance to be a kid growing up and, um, you know, especially kids that are at risk like that, it's especially important that we look out for them. So I do appreciate you guys' work on that and partnership. And, um, yeah, parks, this is quality of life. This is what attracts you to raise a family in this city and stick around this city, not just be here just to go to work and back. So I appreciate everything you guys do on, from your department. A lot of great parks down in South Wichita, a lot of great parks, decent parks elsewhere in the city, but, um, but we really do appreciate all you guys doing, um, all the work that you put into, again, just maintaining a quality of life here we can be proud of.
We're thanking us. Another partnership with DCF that we're really proud of as well. Uh, we actually, uh, partnered with them where they have access to use our rec centers for when they need to have family meetings for some of their, um, young people trying to transition back to home with their biological family. So we provide some space where they can actually meet on site and do some mitigation there that's convenient to their community so they don't have to go down to the actual DCF office and able to kind of facilitate some of that. So we're excited about what we do with working with them as well.
The one gripe I have is the voter fix on the, uh, the tournament we had a couple of months ago. Really Riverside over Watson Park? Uh, we're watching you guys next year, so we're gonna make sure that doesn't happen again.
I have a quick follow-up regarding the apps as well. I, your app is great. I've used it before. Um, in terms of just user-friendliness for the city, have we considered just a joint app? So, you know, when someone goes to see a pothole or go to report a pothole, then they can click on, oh, I see Parks and Rec, you know, has this going on. And then, oh, here, here's a link to transit, maybe I want to drop in the transit. Because having five different apps doesn't seem user-friendly. I try to delete apps on my phone all the time. Just having one app instead of like the four city apps I have on my phone would be helpful.
Right. We have had a lot of discussion about that, and actually, we slowed parks down for about a year while we tried to have a joint app that would involve at least those that are in our program, that have programming offerings. And we just couldn't make it work, couldn't find the right product. Um, and then there's some unique needs, for instance, at the library, the reservation of rooms is tied directly to the programming or, or their, you know, their software, uh, that they use for, um, circulation and everything else. So it was, it made it more difficult for the linkage. We'll continue to work in that direction, um, because I agree with you, that was my goal, is to have a single app, although the complaint app, it's maybe hard to integrate. But in terms of at least programming, it would be great to have us all on one single...
Is there even a way on all of our apps if we list all the other city? I don't know how you'd do that if it's on a front page at the bottom, but hey, here are all the other city apps and resources that you have as well. So at least it could direct people somewhere else?
Yeah.
Okay. So that was one question I had. The second question, great presentation. In terms of cost per head and per program, do we have a breakdown of how, how many people use the athletic portion? What that costs the city per head? The aquatics portion, classes, events, camps? And then you had mentioned the magazine. Is that something that we bear the cost for, or is that the individual bears the cost for the magazine being sent to themselves?
So as far as, uh, the individual head costs and all that would be something that will, I don't know off the top of my head of what that cost would be, uh, but we're something that we can look into. And the way that we typically do is we have cost recovery goal for each one of our individual programs. So we're able to determine once we offer those programs what our cost is gonna be for and what we're gonna generate in revenue. So that factors in the decision on what programs we offer and expand as well. And one of the things that the managers made really clear is that we wanted to make those programs that are available to youth as, as cost, uh, as less cost prohibitive as possible so they can have an opportunity to participate. So that's part of our model that we do as well. As far as our distribution for the catalog, that cost is currently in the Parks and Rec marketing budget. So Shannon Applehorn, who, uh, does our marketing communication, manages that process and the budget for how we print the distribution of the guides and how they distribute it. So one of the things that we did once we transitioned over to the Evolve guide is that we were printing more of the guides we had, uh, available. And we looked at how many were actually left over at each of the quarters, and we had a lot that wasn't being distributed. So we reduced the number that we had, we pushed people more online to look at it, and then we went to a subscription base where both people who actually wanted to have it in hand can actually subscribe to it and it's mailed out to them.
Okay, thank you. I guess two follow-ups to that, too. What is the budget for the magazine right now? Because theoretically, if it's just open, that anybody can subscribe, could have, you know, all four-hundred-thousand residents subscribe to it. So what is the budget cap for the magazine right now?
So our budget, uh, and I'll, and I'll defer some to Shannon on that she manages that process, but we, with the ten thousand that we print each quarter, we're spending roughly about, Jessica, do you know that number offhand?
For pretty costs, it's about nine thousand. Overall distribution, I think that would be like is about extra two to three thousand dollars.
So you're looking at around fifty thousand a year for that? Okay. So that was one question. And then, yeah, I would be interested in just seeing, um, the cost per individual. So if it costs us a thousand dollars, you know, per head for a program versus one dollar per head per program, I'd be interested in knowing the breakdown of that.
Sure. If, if I could, that's gonna be pretty extensive information because, um, the park board and the staff have adopted the, um, funding pyramid. And so, um, for many of their recreation programs, it's, uh, there is no cost to the city, right? But there are so many programs that I don't know that it's, I think it's gonna be substantial effort to show you every program, uh, but we could group them where we have, we can tell you the ones where we have full cost recovery or we won't conduct the program. So we will schedule it, but if we can't get to, to that cost recovery, we, we'll go ahead and cancel it. But then we do have a s- a series of other programs where we have, we have a city subsidy, and that's by design and approval of the park board. Uh, we do, I know we have information every season on our cost recovery at the tennis center, as well as at the swimming pools. We can give you all of that.
Just whatever information we have available now is fine.
Per head cost for all of our recreation programming would be a little difficult, I think.
Whatever information we have now is fine.
So I had, um, first, I just want to say wonderful presentation. Appreciate all the work that Parks and Rec does. You guys do a lot more work than I think people realize, and this presentation highlights a lot of that and the partnerships. Always been a supporter of parks. I do agree that it's essential, and me growing up, poor, all I really had was parks, so I love to support parks. Um, just one thing I want to highlight publicly, it was on the slide, um, you've mentioned it briefly, but all of our swimming pools have video cameras now, so they are being monitored. Want to make sure the public knew that. Also, in Evolve Magazine, um, they used to have our pictures in there. We, we don't have to be in there, but have we thought about putting park board members in there just so the community would know who the park board is?
Sure, that's something we could...
So not necessarily us, but I think park board would be important, just working with the parks. Yeah, I think that was it. But again, I appreciate the presentation and look forward to all the work you all continue to do.
One thing I do want to mention is there has been, I think, a, a great progression over the last year to two years in terms of expansion of our partnerships with USD two-five-nine. Um, and Reggie, I think, hit it in many of the, in many different areas, but we're now sharing facilities and programming that we never did, uh, up until this past eighteen months or so.
I would just like to add, um, I appreciate thinking outside the box and adding the cornhole and ping pong and things like that. You know, I spent a lot of time at the park when my son was little or at the splash pads and stuff like that, and looking for something to encourage teenagers or adults to continue going to the parks and utilizing those spaces, I think is really important. So I appreciate that.
And I know one of the other things is the fitness court that we have over at Pac Garcia, that's an area that we're gonna look at activating more and getting more program available there as well. So that's in your district, so we'll let you know some of that's coming.
Thank you.
It's a lot of great stuff going on north of Kellogg there, Councilmember Hoheiser.
I've noticed. I think we have some good stuff going on down south, too, so balance it out nicely.
Vice Mayor, the next item, um, comes out of ongoing discussions we've had about the drought that we're, uh, we are in and has been with us for a period of time. Uh, we are continuing to see water levels at Cheney drop, and, uh, we felt it was appropriate to come forward and talk about our current condition and maybe, um, also, um, some actions that are necessary in order for us to be able to respond to the drought.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Manager. Uh, Vice Mayor, Councilmember Gary Janson, Public Works and Utilities. As the manager said, I'm here today to provide an update on our drought response efforts. Uh, so I want to talk about current conditions, particularly with our surface water supply at Cheney. It's something that we all have seen in the news lately. Talk about some specifics there and how that continues to impact us. I do want to hit a little bit on where we've been, our efforts to this point, especially since we entered stage one of the drought response plan early last year, and where we want to move forward from today. So current Cheney level is sixty-three point nine percent. We use the twelve-month running average as part of our drought response plan that the City Council approved in twenty thirteen, uh, for our initial look at where we move into the different stages. As of July first, the twelve-month running average was just below seventy percent. The trigger for stage two, the initial trigger for stage two of the drought response plan to consider mandatory water restrictions is sixty-nine percent. We're projecting that by August one, assuming that nothing changes between now and then, which is not likely looking at the weather forecast. Stage three, looking ahead to stage three, is when we would hit a twelve-month running average of below fifty percent is projected in the next twelve to eighteen months if the drought persists as modeled. If we get to stage three for the original plan, all outdoor watering, the recommendation of the plan at that time was all outdoor watering would be restricted.
Uh, what, what is the model that you guys look at for the twelve to eighteen months? Is that Farmer's Almanac?
No, it's, it's based on projections that we have that staff utilizes. It's the same, uh, metrics and methodology we used when the drought response plan was created in twenty thirteen. We look at, uh, long-term trends. We look at usage during previous droughts. We look at projections over the coming years. We model in what we think will happen with restrictive efforts, with our conservation efforts, what we've seen with trends recently on water usage, on what water's needed to serve the community. So there's a lot of information that goes into that, but it's modeling that's done on our end.
So what, what's, where do we get the information as far as weather trends and whether or not we think it's gonna rain or if the drought's gonna break?
Mostly on historical data, looking back. Farmer's Almanac's not a bad reference, uh, but, but looking back on historical data, we've got data all the way back to nineteen twenties prior to the Dust Bowl drought that we can utilize to our benefit and looking over a hundred years, uh, to look at trends and look at projections. I think it's been pretty reliable over the course of time. Again, it's what was utilized to develop the current drought response plan that was codified in twenty thirteen. As we know, it's never a perfect science, or it wouldn't be if you're talking about this today, unfortunately. But I think it's the best information that we've got, uh, and, and we, we look out at anything that we can find, uh, to look at the future, too.
Thank you.
Last thing I want to mention to make sure we keep out there, this is something that's been part of our conversation over the last month or two in talking to the public and the media. I want to remind everybody that we do have two primary water sources, including the Equisped Aquifer, which is currently in good shape. Uh, we have done a lot since twenty thirteen in particular to help with the health of the Equisped Aquifer. There are some limitations on what our current treatment plant can do as far as treating groundwater. I'll talk about that more in just a little bit. But right now, the Equisped Aquifer is more than ninety percent full. So just so everybody knows, quick reminder, Cheney reservoir is not our only source of water. We're not about to run out of water. There's still a lot of water in Cheney, but looking ahead at projections, where we're headed, the fact that Cheney level continues to drop, that's why we're looking at what we are today and the recommendation that we have going forward. So I mentioned that stage one was activated in January twenty-twenty-three. That's when we got below eighty-nine percent level at Cheney. Uh, since that time, we've done, uh, a lot of public outreach. We've worked with our comms team. We've done a lot with education. There's information on our website that's been available since that time. We have brought that forward. It's one of the news flashes now on the website that takes you more directly to our drought response plan. It talks about our internal conservation plan, which I won't spend a lot of time on here, but I can come back to if you'd like. We talked about that on June eighteenth, uh, in front, with the council as far as looking at the drought response code language. We, uh, have talked in the past about what we've done as far as keeping fountains off, the things that we've done, uh, with our parks, with all of our facilities. City Hall right now, we're watering one day a week as we are moving towards, uh, with all of our facilities. Talk about more in a moment. We have, uh, I think all of you are aware that we have Spirit is utilizing reuse from our main water treatment plant. They have a contract that allows them to use up to three-hundred-and-eighty-five million gallons a year, uh, so effectively a million gallons a day that they can use, which takes some of the burden off, uh, and helps with our conservation efforts. And I'll just mention again, all this is from me? Sorry.
I think you misspoke. It comes from our sewage treatment plant, not from our water treatment.
Oh, sorry. I did, yeah, I did misspeak, spoke if I said that. Our main sewage wastewater treatment plant, thank you for correcting that. So what does this look like going forward? In spite of all these efforts and the fact that we've seen reduction, we have seen reduction in water use, uh, internally and through the community because of our efforts. We're using less water now than we did in twenty-twenty-three. We're certainly using less water now across the community, uh, than we did back in twenty thirteen when the drought response plan was created. However, we can't impact the weather as much as we would like to, so due to lack of precipitation, what do we do next? So we have a call to action for the entire community. And I want to mention, uh, that this is for all customers. We have a hundred-and-fifty-thousand customers. We provide water to seventeen percent of the state's population, or five-hundred-thousand people. That includes eleven wholesale customers that I'll talk about in just a little bit. They have to follow the same rules, this applies to them, too. We have a call to action to reduce water consumption by ten percent immediately going forward. And I'll talk more as we go through this, kind of where that number comes from. We historically see an increase in water use from July to August to September. So now is the time to get that reversed, change course, change our habits, but we, and, and our, our, the idea is for all, to, to do, all of us to do this together. Uh, we've got a good start on our end. Again, we have seen a reduction in water use in the community, but obviously more is needed because, again, we can't control the weather. We continue to see the level at Cheney dropping. So first and foremost, um, what this looks like in community action, and again, this is for all of us. Uh, the question that's been asked, uh, quite a bit over the last month or two is, is this just for residential customers? It's not. It's for all customers, including the wholesale customers. It's for everybody that utilizes water. Twenty percent of our annual water consumption is outdoor usage during the summer months. That's where we can have the most impact. That's what we are targeting. I mentioned again, we can't control the weather, but this is where we really can make a difference. So we are asking everyone, including ourselves, to reduce outdoor irrigation now, limiting water to, watering to one to two times per week. Water just enough to keep the root systems alive, allowing lawns to go dormant. We have a lot of educational information on our website. Uh, we have representatives in Kansas State Extension Office here today that are gonna come up soon and talk to you about that. Uh, the best thing we can do is water between the hours of ten PM and eight AM. Watering during the day anytime is not ideal at this time of year, the evaporative effects, what happens during the heat. Uh, there's no value in watering in the middle of the day. I was out Sunday, northwest part of town, I saw four different commercial businesses watering at one o'clock in the afternoon. So those are the types of things we need to impact, we need to change habits, and we need to move in a different direction. We are asking, including ourselves, uh, to not overseed lawns or plant new trees or shrubs this fall. Those efforts require more water, uh, assuming that the drought con- conditions persist. Uh, we don't need anything that requires more water, and if we find that we need to move to mandatory restrictions, then we're gonna risk, if people have done those things, they're gonna die off because they don't get the water that they need.
Excuse me, Gary? So how, how's that impacting, um... So how's that impacting our tree canopy, kind of our replanning with our Parks Department? Is, are we just putting a hold on that for now until?
We are, and I'm going to talk about that more in just a minute, but we, our plan is moving forwards. We're putting a hold on all tree planting, whether that's operationally through our capital programs and even on our city projects. We've got numerous projects that are, would be moving towards putting grasses down and trees in the fall and in the spring. We're putting a hold on all of those. So, with a targeted water reduction of 10%, there's three specific things I want to talk about of how we might get there, including implementing city responsibilities from the drought response plan, Stage Two, which speaks to what you just asked, Councilmember Holheisel. We have a proposal to increase Tier Two and Three rates to impact conservation and then an enhanced outreach campaign. So this 10% reduction goal would allow the community and all of us the opportunity to voluntarily reduce outdoor irrigation prior to mandatory restrictions and fines being administered. It would allow adequate time for proposed Tier Two and Three rate adjustments and the impact of that to be quantified if approved by the council. That is, that Tier Two and Three rates adjustment is something we were bringing to the council on August 8th. If that is approved by the council at the time, we're going to need a little bit of time to see the impact of that and what that does for conservation. Staff will continue to monitor organizational community water use and Cheney levels on a month-by-month basis to see how well we're doing with this plan. So Stage Two measures that we are implementing now, we were already heading towards, we had done a lot of this, but we're going to make sure that we are doing this with all of our programming and everything that we do as an organization. Additional conservation efforts implemented by the city will include suspension of all planning of new trees and ornamentals. So, coming back to your question, everything we do operationally, whether it's on the general fund side, the capital side, wherever that's at, along with any of our projects, we are suspending planning of any new materials going forward. We won't be doing any overseeding. The same thing that we're asking the public to do, we're going to make sure we're doing on our end, and we're limiting turf watering is restricted to one day a week. We're moving towards that now. We've gotten pretty close to that already. Most of our facilities have been down to watering a couple of times a week. You can imagine with the number of facilities that we have, there are different people that oversee the operations of irrigation systems. Police and Fire has that contracted out, trying to get outreach to them, working through our facilities groups, working with Park has been a tremendous help to make sure that we are watering one day a week. We need to lead the way on this, and we can make a big difference in the amount of water that we use.
Gary, I have a quick question at that end. Do we have data that we can show the public showing our water usage decreasing at city facilities as well?
We do. We do, and that's information that we're going to continue to provide on our website where our drought response plan information is. We have seen a reduction on our side. I can tell you on Park operations, just over the last year and a half, they've reduced their water usage by almost 50% in the efforts that we talked about and everything that they've done, but we do have that data and we can provide that, too. I think some of it's on there already, but we'll make sure that that's updated.
Yeah, that would be helpful, and thank you, Parks, for taking the lead on that. I did have one question. I asked the manager about this previously, and so I would maybe want some information from Jennifer regarding this. I've had a few calls from members that live in HOAs saying that HOAs are fining their residents for voluntarily restricting usage now, and my understanding is we can't do anything about that currently because we haven't entered Stage Two. Now, if we do enter Stage Two, can, do we have the ability to restrict homeowners associations from fining their residents?
Councilmember, the HOAs have some statutory guidance. There's an HOA statutory scheme. We need to look at that, whether we can override that. I can get that information for you.
Thank you. I just feel bad when citizens are trying to do what we're telling them to do, and then they're being fined by their HOAs for doing what the city's trying to direct so we don't have to mandate water restrictions.
And I do want to be, I want to clarify for the public, we're, the city itself, the organization, is moving into Stage Two. The 10% reduction, right now, we're still going for voluntary compliance and asking everyone to follow the guidelines. So technically, we'll not be into the mandatory restrictions of Stage Two. We're just asking people to move in that direction.
Thank you, and I might add a little bit more context to that because we've spent quite a bit of time over the last year looking into what happens with HOAs because we've heard a lot from the public saying, hey, what am I supposed to do? So, HOA covenants are subject to state law, and so they need to determine how they want to do that, but you're exactly right. There are folks who are wanting to comply, wanting to help out, and they're getting fined, and we don't take that lightly. We understand people choose to live in areas that they want those covenants in place. It's quality of life. We're trying to balance that. We have had considerable outreach to the HOAs. HOA management oversees 200 and some HOAs across the community. I've got staff who spent a lot of time with them last year, trying to promote the message, trying to make sure they understand the importance of what we're doing. I think the best thing we can do is continue that outreach. After today, we're going to continue to work with comms team on reaching out to HOAs, asking them to consider backing off, which they can do, and being a good part of this. As you can imagine, so 90% of our users are residential customers. I don't know how many, so we've got 25,000 customers that have backflow preventers, which are required if you've got an irrigation system using city water. I don't know how many of those are under HOAs, but I'm sure it's quite a few. Anyway, that is a very central part of our efforts going forward. We've already been there. I'm not sure how much impact we've made, but we're going to keep working really hard on that part because that's a great question, and it's one that's going to continue to come up.
I would just say, I know, obviously, I know we can't predict the future, but what have trends been in the past? Like, I was reading the news, assuming it was all true that we're the lowest that it's been in the last 11 years, like, obviously, we would love to get a lot of rain, but what does the, what do the trends of the past usually shows? Does it take five years to get caught back up? Or like, how do we, I mean, besides us mitigating use?
So, the, it is, Cheney reservoir is the lowest it's been in quite some time. It's still not at the lowest level that it was in 2013, and we've got foot, foot and a half to go to that for what it's worth on that value. Trends are what we continue to look at. Our projections based on normal precipitation, if we could get back to normal, is that it would take three years for Cheney to fill back to conservation pool level. We were fortunate in 2013 that one massive rain event took care of most of the drought. That's our challenge, obviously. The, the, I think the, I think we've done good. Again, we're seeing a reduction in water use. I think since, especially since early 2023 when we entered Stage One and we started talking about conservation efforts and all the things that we're doing, we have seen a reduction in water use. We still need to get it to rain in the Cheney Basin, but we're looking at all, everything that we can in that regards, but you never know what's going to happen, right?
Sure. Okay, last question, and maybe you haven't quite gotten there, and that's totally fine, but the graphic that's been floating around, I think from Public Works, about the top 30 consumption companies, is there something specific that they are doing or are they just trying to follow our lead? Because some of the numbers are alarming, just about how much more water they're using than others.
So, and I know what-
I assume you know what I'm talking about.
Right.
Yeah. That'll make you mad.
Alarming, it depends on what context you're looking at.
Gary, you may be able, maybe you should link this to your discussion on rates, on Tier Two and Three.
Okay, sorry.
I can do that.
Yeah.
But I might mention real quick, just so I don't forget this part, the, those businesses, a lot of those, one of the highest users is the City of Derby. They're a wholesale customer, and I'll talk more about how this applies to them. One of them is Spirit. We talked about that they're utilizing reuse. Those companies that are using that water is part of their business model. They employ a lot of people in this community, and I'm not so sure that we can make a claim that they're using water unwisely or unfairly when it's part of what they do for their business. So, we're always interested in talking to them. We're always looking for ways to collaborate with them for savings. That's not always the best place that we can find water savings. Again, we've got to focus on this outdoor usage. Second part of our Stage Two measures that we're going to implement for ourselves, and I appreciate the manager clarifying that again, that these are items that we are activating for the organization, and this is talked about in our drought response plan, is that the water blend will be changed to limit the use of Cheney water to the maximum extent possible while maintaining safe drinking water requirements. I mentioned before, we have limitations on what our current water treatment plant can do as far as treating groundwater. Once we have a new plan online next year, we can actually treat 100% groundwater if we need be. Right now, we're close to, to where we are on the blend that our plant can accept, but we're going to push the absolute limit on our current water treatment plant to treat as much groundwater as possible to take some additional stress off of Cheney. That does require some additional chemicals, some additional operating costs to make that happen, but we think it's prudent and it makes the most sense. Last item on this slide is that mandatory water restrictions could be activated, but pending results over the coming months. So we're going to keep a close eye on this. We're going to hope to see that reduction that we're shooting for and that target across the community. We still keep that option there if need be. So then I want to talk about Tier Two and Three, proposed revised rates. So, just a reminder that all of our customers, residential and commercial, pay for water and sewer rates under three tiers. Tier One being the majority of the use for all of our users throughout most of the year. Tiers Two and Three then are based on average winter consumption, and I'll show you a table in a minute that explains that a little bit better. Average winter consumption for any user established based on December, January, February, and March, average monthly use. Once you get to a certain threshold above that average monthly use, you move into a different tier. Most Tier Two and Three use is, can be attributed to outdoor water usage during the summer. Only 18% of residential customers reach Tier Two, and I mention residential here because that's 90% of our customers. It's about 50% of our average yearly volume is from residential customers. This doesn't just apply, it applies to everybody, to all of our water customers. Only 2% of residential, of customers reach Tier Two, and I'll show you that number in just a minute. That is really going way above what your average winter consumption to get into that level. The proposed rates in these tiers that we've looked at and our recommendation on August 8th would reduce the total volume by nine to 10%, so getting close to reaching that target we looked at. That's half. If you recall, I mentioned that 20% of our average annual consumption is outdoor water usage. It would reduce the Tier Two and Three volumes by half, which would reduce our overall consumption by 9%. I mentioned, I'll mention again, this is being proposed before the council on August 8th, and if approved by the council at that time, the new rate implementation would be September 1st. Talk quickly about our analysis of these volume tiers. So we had NewGen, our consultant, that completed our most recent cost of service analysis for the utility, provide their expertise and an evaluation analysis of what we could do with Tiers Two and Three rates to promote conservation. They had a recommendation that includes price increases for Tiers Two and Three based on the elasticity of demand approach. So I had to kind of educate myself on what this was, and I think this box does a really good job of explaining how they went about seeing how the public will respond to an increase in price. Elasticity of demand measures the extent to which demand changes relative to price changes. Elastic goods and services have a greater relationship to price than inelastic goods and services. So, if you look at the left side of that box, inelastic is we all need to pay for fuel to drive to works and school, basic groceries, water to drink, wash clothes, which would be your average winter consumption volume. That's inelastic. That's something we've got to do. Most consumers are going to pay whatever that price is. On the elastic side, comparatively, you have the option to choose if you want to pay the price of fuel to take a trip, discretionary items other than basic grocery staples, and then you'll see watering lawns, filling swimming pools, sprinklers, things like that. That was the basis of their evaluation, was looking at that elastic demand. They've got tons of data that they use, looking at what others have done, and they can gauge and measure what the response is likely to be. There's a lot of information on here, so I want to focus on residential inside the city and commercial inside the city. So, we have residential and commercial customers outside of the city. Because there is a larger cost to get water to them, they pay higher rates. That's not near as many of our customers. So if you look at the left two columns, residential inside the city, and in fact, let's go to the second column as a quick reminder. Average winter consumption is based on December, January, February, March, average monthly use for the rest of that year until it resets. Anytime you get out, use above 110% of your average winter consumption but less than 310%, you move into Tier Two rates, and anything above 310% moves into Tier Three. So keep that in mind. Tier Two is 18% of all users. Tier Three is only 2%. When you get into Tier Three, you're tripling the amount of average winter consumption that you're using during those four months. That becomes what we would consider discretionary at that point, and people making a choice to use a lot of water, right? Most of it being outdoor water usage. The recommendation from NewGen effectively doubles the current rates for Tiers Two and Three. As you can see, Tier Two would recommend going from 1078 per thousand gallons to 2257, and then the Tier Three would also a little bit more than double from 1577 to 3302. Same is on the commercial. Current commercial rates are a little bit higher, but effectively, the Tier Two and Three proposed increases would double. Our goal when we started out to look at this with NewGen was to maximize conservation, and we wanted to try to hit a 50% reduction in outdoor water use and to be revenue neutral. This isn't an effort to make money. Tiers Two and Three revenues are the most volatile, but that's not a place that we're trying to balance the budget. It's part of our projections. We're a lot better off having more revenue within our base rates in Tier, Tier One, but we do think that this can hopefully provide additional conservation efforts. This is something we usually look at with the council when it comes to rates that I wanted to focus on. For an average monthly combined water and sewer bill, especially if you look at the mid-user, so the low user would be considered to still stay within Tier One, a mid-user, based on average use, what we see users use now and, and future projections, their monthly bill would increase by $10.61 with these proposed increases. NewGen's projections, again, show that with these increases, we would reduce Tier Two and Three by 50% and almost 9% of our overall annual consumption.
Gary, quick question while we're on this slide. Percentage-wise, low user, mid-user, high user, how many of our residents are in the low-use category versus mid-use versus high-use? Estimate does not be exact.
I don't know that I've got that number.
It's, this is an arbitrary distinction, but it's probably 80%. Well, again, let's go back to the numbers we had before, and that is those that are in Tier One, 80% of our residential customers in Tier One, 18% in Tier Two, and 2% in Tier Three.
But that, so when we go back to one more slide, just so I understand what we're looking at, the Tier One, Tier Two, Three, that can be subjective based on you're normally a Tier One customer, and let's say you go to 111% one month, you automatically become a Tier Two customer if you do it one month?
You, you only pay for your Tier Two use, right? So, a majority, if I remember right, majority of your water will still be in Tier One, but it's what you have incrementally above that that you'll pay on the Tier Two.
Do we know how many citizens increase from Tier One to Tier Two at a given point? So, let's say we're at peak summer. I imagine if it's 110% of average winter consumption, correct?
Correct.
You're probably going to go above that in July if you're watering, you know, one time. So most of our citizens, if they have outdoor irrigation, probably do enter Tier Two at some point.
18%, 29,000.
Only 18% enter Tier Two at all?
Only 18% enter Tier Two at all, and 2% enter Tier Three.
Okay, awesome. Thank you.
So, the, and to your point on this slide, we don't want this to get confused, low-use, mid-use, and high-use doesn't necessarily correlate to Tier One, Two, and Three. Those numbers are a little bit harder to come to, but I, so this low-use, mid-use, and high-use- high use is based on monthly gallons. If you're a high-end user all the time, if you use 15,000 gallons average a month during your AWC, average winter consumption months, and if you still use 15,000 throughout the year, you still stay in tier one. You don't get into tier two and three because it's based on how much you use. You're paying a lot more because you're using 15,000 gallons a month. But it's all based on where you start on that average winter consumption. So these two don't necessarily tie together, but I just wanted to mention again that what we would consider an average user is going to be the majority of folks that we're talking about and trying to apply this to. Their bill would increase $10.61. Just a quick reminder, we'll be bringing this to city council on August 8th. I'll show you some of the same information and talk about a little bit more detail at that point. I mentioned wholesale water customer responsibilities. We have 11 wholesale water customers, including multiple cities, multiple rural water districts. Per the wholesale water agreements that we have with them, all are required to have a conservation plan that models any changes we implement as a result of drought conditions or even otherwise. They're responsible to implement what was on slide four. Well, I'm not going to go that far back, but what was on slide four as far as what we are doing are the community action, reducing water to one to two times a week, water just enough to keep the roots alive, water in between 10:00 and 8:00 a.m. We are expecting our wholesale customers to provide that same messaging to all of their customers. They're also required to implement the portions of stage two that we are implementing, which is to water one day a week for their organization, no planting of trees or shrubs moving forward. They have to submit a plan to us showing up that's what we're doing. I've reached out to all of our wholesale customers that started receiving information back. We'll make sure we get those reports from them that reflects, again, that they're modeling also what we are doing. Last thing I've got, and I've got several others that are going to help with this, is our outreach and messaging. I'm going to turn this part over to Megan Lovely, the first part of this. When she gets done, we have K-State Extension Office here that's going to provide some additional information. They'll do a lot better job of talking about what proper watering is during a drought than I did. Matthew McKernan is here, and I'm going to have him come up after Megan, but I'll let Megan talk about what our outreach and messaging is for all the things that we've talked about.
Megan Lovely, City Communications. I'll be brief and just do a brief overview. I also promised Jim and Bob I would not saturate my comments with water puns, but I might sprinkle in a couple here and there. Gary went over a lot of what we've already done. In January of 2023, as we entered stage one, we really dove right in developing some messaging materials, a really strong focus on enhanced communication in hotter months where the outdoor water usage is of course higher. And then what stage two would mean for the community to try to impact behavior before we get to this point. The timeline for stage two, as you know, has shifted multiple times based on rainfall, evaporation rates, as more, as we inch closer to stage two, we've developed an enhanced plan for messaging leading up to stage two and stronger urgency and message behind that before, we've really focused on what the city has been doing to prepare for the drought before this and during stage one, and then what residents could use to reduce their water use. And we've also been really focusing on messaging to our highest water users and our HOAs during this time. So we could weave any rate adjustments or need to declare stage two into our enhanced messaging and tactics. We have two tiers of messaging that we've established, a more traditional informational campaign, let's call it a dry campaign, and then we have a stunt-based campaign aimed at sort of creating a conversation and slight intrigue about drought messaging to make a splash. The stunt-based campaign is also targeted at a younger audience as it's easier to change that behavior early, and we anticipate coming back to drought conditions more frequently coming into the future. Thus the need for more continued education even after we are out of drought conditions. So stage two messaging would have a higher cadence than stage one messaging we were doing with Cake Partners and other meteorologists, they're in the back of the room right now. Every two weeks, we were doing drought updates. We were, we had a cadence of, I want to say, every two, every one to two weeks in the summer of drought messaging, and then about once every three weeks in winter months. So we would up that. So far, we've been heavily reliant on our earned media. We could look at some promotional materials, especially as we have this goalpost of 10%. We've taken inspiration from other markets such as Denver that had a really successful only use what you need water campaign that lasted over five years, and that resulted in a 20% reduction of use in their community. So we have great partners in the media. We would be underwater without them. They really had a ripple effect in getting that message out, and it's something that I think really resonates with the, with the community. So in addition to earned media, we're working with our partners, the K-State Extension Office. We've worked with some nurseries who've helped us with some of our messaging and outreach to their customers. And then this, ahead of this fall, we're developing materials for more customer-facing items that they could display in their store that would push drought-resistant materials. We were initially a little concerned that there would be some resistance from some of those nurseries, but what we found is that drought-resistant grasses and xeriscaping materials are actually just slightly more costly for residents, so they're not anticipating that much of an impact to their business at this time. So we're looking at some funds to carve out for some social boosting. As you know, we're a little bit limited on what we can spend for this campaign, but we're looking to really optimize our earned media and just deluge in the community with this, this message. So if our goal is a 10% reduction water use, that gives us something to aim for, and we can flood our channels, but it is worth noting that even with pervasive messaging, behavior change is a little bit easier to do if there are some consequences behind it. So with that, yes, sir.
First, thank you for your dry sense of humor, given the topic and the restrictions we have here. That's much appreciated.
Yes.
Are we sending notices out with the water bills as well?
You know, I'm not sure that we have done that. We have sent, we have, thank you. So we have sent dedicated communications to our highest water users and HOAs. We're really focusing on those areas as the need for reduction primarily relies with them.
I appreciate it.
I have a quick question. I appreciate the tsunami of information. When it comes to the water bill, could we look at potentially having a question of like, how do you compare? So like looking at, they'll see what their usage was in their bill, but showing like a tier two and tier three number, so it's always front of mind for them?
We can certainly explore that.
Thank you, Megan, for the presentation. Really appreciate it. Just a quick thought, too, I've, I've had some folks say that, you know, it doesn't matter if I limit my, and I'm just thinking about this for messaging, that it, you know, it doesn't matter, I'm going to keep watering my lawn because I'm on a well. And I try and explain to folks, it's all the same water, right? It's coming from the ground, we need to conserve. Will there be any kind of maybe targeted messages in different parts of the community, like for example Northwest Wichita has a lot more wells, to make sure that they understand that even though they're not using city water to, you know, irrigate their grass, we still need them to try and save water?
Yeah. Even though those on wells have a little bit of a different responsibility during the drought, it's always a good idea for everyone to reduce their water usage.
Yeah. And then the other thing I just was going to mention was anytime when we're doing our messaging out in the community regarding this, talking about our water conservation rebate program, it's all in our website, and then communications and public works have done an awesome job. I spent some time over the weekend preparing for this and looking at the website of how you can save water and irrigation education, and it's all so easy to find, it's well laid out, you know, I know nothing about grass and now I feel like I'm an expert. So, you know, really, if we can also promote the website and driving people to this information.
Yes, we have definitely shared that link whenever we share information on tips on how to save water and what the city is doing.
Thank you.
First off, Becky rained on my parade because she's the only one that hasn't made a pun so far. In terms-
I said, "well."
Okay, I'll give it to you.
I'm sorry, I know my pen was just a drop in the bucket compared to some of the others.
You recovered, you recovered yourself. In terms of documents, so if I want to personally reach out to HOAs in my community, I know that Councilman Tuttle said it's on our website. Could the comm staff send us kind of a full packet of information that we can pass out to individuals after this meeting, too?
We definitely can. Our public work staff has been doing the next phase of outreach to HOAs, and we can definitely share that with council on what we're sending out.
Okay, thank you.
I know that this conversation has given Bob the vapors, but I would also love to see the city of Wichita Duck used and communications more.
Yes, we, our second tier of communication with a duck mascot, which was inspired by Denver's campaign, has primarily been on our social platforms that reach a younger audience, but we are slowly trickling that into some of our main platforms as well.
I think the duck should have been here today.
Delta is sleeping right now, is her name.
Quick question, and this may be for Gary, too. I'm sure nurseries will want to sell trees and grass seed. So people with wells, will they be limited to not planting trees, too, or could they go ahead and plant trees and grass?
We're not going to offer that up as a limitation. Our messaging is to everyone, everyone across the community, whether on well water or city water. The drought response plan is focused on those that are using city water, but our best messaging is to everyone to follow the same conservation efforts and the same restrictions that we're asking for across the community.
I've seen several people have already killed their lawns to try to kill the Bermuda. So they can't plant grass?
Might find us halfway there.
Yeah, excuse me, just the reminder, we're not fully, we're not into mandatory restrictions. We're asking for voluntary compliance to get to a 10% reduction. So there may be cases where someone, for whatever reason, exceeds our guidelines or our standards, but we're hoping as a community that we take this seriously and go forward with a 10% reduction. But there, we're not going to be going customer to customer and at this point enforcing the once a week water standards, watering or irrigation standards that would be part of phase two. We've not formally entered into phase two except for city operations.
That, that would be something that we would weave into those regular communications and direct outreach should we reach that point?
Okay. I will note that we have talked about sending notification to heavy water users if we see a continuation of their water use. So if it may be not special circumstances, but they just decide to continue at the high levels, we will still send a notice to them, reminding them of the 10% reduction and the seriousness of the issue. Okay.
Thank you, Megan. Now I want to bring up Matthew McKernan with K-State Extension Office. He's going to provide some information very specific to most effective way to water lawns during this time of the year. And one thing I want to mention before we get away today is a lot of the things that we're talking about are good habits for everyone to practice going forward. I don't think we expect in perpetuity that people are going to water one day a week, even, even on our end, but I think we can get to a better place. We've seen several media outreaches recently, talking to citizens, some who mentioned that they would stop watering twice a day. No one should be watering twice a day under any circumstance at any point in time. So this is about changing habits and moving forward. Don Henry and I were talking about when the drought broke in 2013, I mentioned it was one large rain event. I would guess you within weeks, guess within weeks of that, most people probably forgot that we'd even had a drought. So our goal with all of this, too, is just to really, really change habits, change the way people think. I think we've done a pretty good job with that over the last two years with what we're doing. We want to make sure that these things persist going forward, too. And so I think it'll be good to hear what these folks have to say as far as good habits down the road, even when we're past the drought.
Thank you very much. I'm sorry to rain on the parade today, but I was not prepared to have all of the water puns that are necessary to present, but happy to be here to present to you today. My name is Matthew McKernan, and I work for the K-State Research and Extension Office here in Sedgwick County, along with my coworker Abby Drought. We are both horticulture agents, and our goal in the community is to provide unbiased and research-based information to help people grow plants as healthy as possible so that we can have a vibrant and beautiful community, but also doing it in a water-responsible way. One of the things that we want to stress today is the importance of watering correctly, and that involves several different things. Our biggest recommendation for the community is as we water, we want to make sure that we water deeply and infrequently. This means not needing to water daily because watering daily is not a requirement to have healthy plants in our community. We want to make sure that we allow the water to penetrate deeper into our soils as we water with larger amounts, and we want to make sure that we provide periods of mini-drought in between our waterings so that when we get to these extended periods of drought within our community, our plants are better adapted to be able to survive those longer periods of dry conditions. Essentially, the more water we can provide deeper into the soil with each watering, the longer that our plants are going to be able to go in between waterings without having symptoms of wilt or drought stress. That deeper watering is also going to encourage those roots to grow deeper into our soil, which will help the longevity and health of our plants as well. By also watering deeply and infrequently, we create this reservoir of water that is deeper into the soil and less likely to evaporate day to day with our bright sunny conditions that we often experience over the summer months. With this, we really want to make sure that, again, we water infrequently but deeply. And this involves also knowing and measuring the water that we're applying in the landscape. Simply turning on the sprinkler and walking away is not enough. We need to be measuring the amount of water that we're applying so that we're not overapplying water to keep our plants alive. Typically for the landscape, our Tallahassee lawns, which is one of our most common lawns in this area, only requires an inch to an inch and a half of water per week. And so we really encourage people who, who do water their lawns to have some sort of way that they measure how much they're applying. This could be as simple as putting a tuna can, an empty tuna can out into the yard, a rain gauge, or an empty Tupperware from the kitchen cabinet that has straight up and down sides. Once you've reached that water level in that container from one inch to one and a half inches, you can turn off your irrigation system for the week because that's the amount of water that applies, that's needed to keep those plants alive. It's also really important that as we move into future stages of the drought response, we also want to try to make these changes to our water application as gradually as possible. That's going to increase the likelihood that our plants will be able to survive and adapt to the drier conditions that may be provided with the opportunity to water less. For our warm season grasses, these can also be a great choice for our community because they naturally are more drought resistant and able to handle drier conditions. So this includes buffalo grass, Bermuda grass, and zoysia grass. Typically with buffalo grass, if we're able to soak the soil six to eight inches deep, we can allow that grass to be watered once only every two weeks to, in order to continue to have a healthy green lawn. The same is true with Bermuda and zoysia. Typically, one good watering, six inches deep in that soil, is enough water to survive that grass for a two-week period without the need for more water. When it comes to our trees and shrubs, we also may want to consider prioritizing the plants in our landscape that are hardest to replace and ensuring that they have their water needs met maybe over some of the more easily replaceable parts of our landscape, such as our flower beds or lawn. For a mature tree, if we can soak the groundwater with an irrigation event about 12 inches deep, that water is going to be enough to carry that plant through for the next three to four weeks without the need for additional water. On newly planted or young trees, trees that are within five years or less of being planted, typically those trees need about 10 gallons of water per week, and so we can easily measure that with two five-gallon buckets that we fill and dump at the base of that tree in order to help those newly planted trees survive. There are a few other tips that I'd like to share with you today on maintaining a more drought-tolerant lawn and landscape. As has been mentioned today, it's very important that we're watering in the early morning hours, both to, both to reduce the amount of evaporation that occurs and water loss from our irrigation, but also to help reduce the disease that occurs, especially in our lawns, watering late in the evening or the heat of the day. We can also do simple things like increasing the mowing height of our lawn mowers to increase the drought tolerance of our lawn. We can reduce fertilizer use in the landscape because increased fertilizer use increases growth, which requires more water of our plants. We can also make sure that we audit our irrigation systems and make sure that as our sprinkler systems do run, they're not leaking or wasting water down the sidewalks and driveways. We can add mulch to our flower beds and gardens to conserve the water that is applied. We can eliminate weeds that are going to compete for our water resources in the ground with our more desirable- with our more desirable plants. And we can also eliminate the plants in our landscape that are high water use plants and consider replacing them with more drought tolerant species that can handle prolonged periods of dry conditions once they are established. It's important to monitor your plants for signs of drought stress, and again, prioritize those plants in the landscape that are hardest to replace when it comes to dry conditions. I'd like to turn it over to my coworker Abby to provide you a few more resources and recommendations on how to accomplish that.
Thank you, Matthew. I do want to say that the drought we're here to talk about today and I are not related. We just happen to have the same last name.
I thought that was a pun.
So even though it may not feel right, you can allow some of your plants to go into dormancy. Many plants naturally survive periods of drought by entering a temporary dormancy. So consider embracing this natural defense mechanism, allowing the lawn to go dormant during hot, dry weather, and watering plants just to keep them alive rather than keeping them green and lush is another suggestion for residents to just be okay with. It's okay to let it go a little brown. Tall Fescue naturally can become dormant and brown during hot and dry periods, and then it'll recover acceptably when growing conditions improve in the late summer and early autumn. In the case of mature landscape plants and lawns that may be dormant, the goal is to supply only a portion of the plants the water needs, so as Matthew said, just to keep them alive. Since growth occurs at optimum rates in a normally watered plant, some stress may reduce growth, which is not critical for many plants reaching their mature size. The goal is simply to keep the plants alive but not thriving. Newly planted trees, shrubs, or plants will require greater watering as they are not fully established and cannot survive the drought as easily. That's why they're promoting not planting new trees. While dormant lawns may go two or three weeks or more without water, after two to three weeks of dormancy, it's important to keep the crowns of the dormant grass alive by applying about a quarter of an inch of water every couple of weeks, either by irrigation or rainfall. Established tall Fescue lawns, growing on good soil and maintained appropriately, can survive up to eight weeks without substantial irrigation. Early fall is the ideal time to perform important cultural practice on cool season lawns though, such as fertilization, core aeration, and overseeding. We recommend watering in mid to late August to green up and revive dormant lawns, so they can respond to these practices. The big thing not to do is to not follow an irrigation schedule that causes the lawn to bounce back and forth between active growth and dormancy. Each time the lawn resumes growth after dormancy, stored energy and reserves in the plant are depleted. A continuous pattern of dormancy followed by active growth can stress turf and may slow its recovery with improved weather conditions. So those are the last of our tips here. For more tips and resources, we have partnered with the city of Wichita on the Save Wichita Water website, under the irrigation page, irrigation education page, and you can find lots of publications from K-State Research and Extension on there. Our K-State Garden Hour videos, there are some at the bottom, and links to our K-State Garden Hour website, where you can see lots of lawn and water, lawn and gardening tips from us. We have many publications on there, like I mentioned. The three ones we want to bring your attention to are a publication called Maintaining Good Lawns With Less Water. This speaks directly to what we're talking about today, and it's a full two-page publication with tons and tons of great information that's accessible to all residents, anyone to print off at home, available as a PDF as well. Watering your lawn, that's generally, how to water your lawn in general, and then watering newly planted and young trees and shrubs. But like I said, we have a full list on the Save Wichita Water website for residents to use. It's easy to access. To get ahold of us at K-State Research and Extension for any residents that may have further questions, we do have a garden hotline that is free and available to discuss how to conserve water in their lawns if they have further questions. We're open Monday through Friday, 9:00 AM to noon, and 1:00 PM to 4:00 PM. We're available by phone at 316-660-0190. I just want to give that out, so if anybody needs that. We also have an email address that residents can email pictures of their lawns if they're having problems or other plant problems. We're available there as well. All that information is available on our website. Thank you for having us today.
Thank you, appreciate you being here. That was a lot of great information. Links to those resources can be found on our website, and they can easily be found on the website themselves, but we've got links to all of that information. I'm going to wrap this up by echoing something that the manager said, just to recapture a couple of main things. We are moving as an organization into certain parts of Stage Two. We're going to water one day a week. No plantings moving forward. That's within the organization on all projects. We're putting a hold on all of that. Our wholesale customers have to follow suit. They have to model their conservation plans the same way. This request for a 10% reduction in outdoor water use is still a request for voluntary conservation, a continuation of voluntary conservation across the community. I think we're doing a pretty good job. We've seen, I'll just say again, we've seen at least a steady in the water use. We've seen a reduction in some areas across the community, but we need to continue that push. We need to see that we're continuing to change course and making a difference. We're going to watch this closely. Hopefully, we don't need to go to mandatory restrictions, but it's still an option. As we get halfway through the summer, more or less, you never know with Kansas weather, we typically will start seeing a reduction in water use after September. We hope that we see wetter months on the horizon as we historically do, that starts to bring some relief in a lot of ways. All of this helps set us up coming into next spring, so that lawns are prepared, new plantings aren't there. In case this drought does persist, and we need to move forward to mandatory restrictions at that point, we're all going to be in a better place. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any more questions.
Gary, thank you for the presentation and thank you for all your work on this. When we talked about this a couple of weeks, I don't even know how long ago at council, one of the slides that really impressed me, and we might want to show it again on August 8th. And I understand that outdoor watering is what we're really targeting, right? Because that's the biggest consumption. But you did have an amazing slide of all of the ways that the city internally is also trying to conserve water. And I had the opportunity two weeks ago to sit on our City of Wichita Internal Water Conservation Committee and heard from all the different departments everything that they're doing, and it was really impressive. Bob and I yesterday kind of had a robust conversation about this of, you know, not only just watering, but how else can we conserve water as people? You know, just as easy as turning your water off when you're brushing your teeth and taking shorter showers and all those kinds of things. But we might want to just revisit and remind the community some of those tips, because at this point, like literally, everything matters. So you are doing a great job, but anytime we can just get more messaging out, and I think especially, I am very proud of the fact that the city is serving as a role model for this, not just with our outdoor watering, but for every department that we have. Thank you.
I appreciate that. That link to our internal conservation plan is also on our website. It's got a lot of great information about what we've done. We have kept public fountains off for the last year and a half in spite of requests and urges from folks to bring those back online. Mostly that's recycled water, but there's still quite a bit of water tied to that. There's so many things that we've done that we will continue to do and look for opportunities. I was at the water center yesterday, Herman Hill Park, which is where our treatment facility is for groundwater contamination. Great program. Anyway, we've got a lot of public education stuff there, and there was something that caught my eye that I sent to staff that we're going to work on. And what it shows is average family water use and where they use their water, and whether it's for showering, taking baths, washing dishes, washing clothes, and places that you can save. And so I think we're going to work on that, because I think it'd be pretty stark when you show all those things you do during the day is here, and outside watering is here. Keeping that at the forefront. But also, I think it's a good point. I can tell you from my perspective, I have two adult children currently living with me that insist on taking showers for about as long as they possibly can, which is coming to a stop. But things like that, you know, can have an impact too. It's not just outdoor water.
And one of the things on the website too, that I thought was really interesting, was swimming pools, right? And we talked a little bit about that, I think, in our committee a couple of weeks ago, of what we're doing with our pools, but, you know, encouraging people who have pools to keep them covered when they're not using them, so they don't have the evaporation. And so I think that, you know, the outdoor watering obviously is the priority, and I understand we don't want to mix messages too much. But, you know, for people too, who don't have a lawn to water, we have lots of renters, different folks. I just, I hope that everyone in the city of Wichita, everyone who calls themselves a Wichitaan, will understand this problem and be, try and be a part of the solution.
Thank you, I appreciate that, and we agree.
So I wanted to say, I appreciate Matthew and Abby's presentation. It was like a downpour of just really good information. Wanted to know if we could, I know this whole thing is being recorded, but can we like clip that piece and push it out? I mean, it was stuff, I know, I didn't know, like an inch and a half could, you know, be good for the yard like that, instead of like timing it. So I think that part would be good to share. And then I only pay attention to the, on the water rebate, some of the other things, but is rain barrels a part of that water rebate program?
It is, it is. And there's still, and I appreciate that being brought up, Councilmember Tuttle, because it's something I should have mentioned. Easy access on our website, there is still funding available. We're working our way through it. Rain barrels is one of them. And our focus this year, again, was on things related to outdoor water use. I get calls once in a while, get pictures sent, because we have gotten a little bit of rain here and there, of people watering while it's raining. Rain sensors are a part of our rebate program. Highly recommended that people implement those. It seems that commercial businesses, some seem to be some of the worst about that, so we'll keep that message out there too.
Gary, we've talked a lot about what obviously the city is doing, but there's other government partners as well. So the county, the state, the federal government, and then also our schools have a lot of property in the community. Do we know if they're also helping us in this effort currently? Are there any highlights?
Thank you for that question, because I wanted to mention that earlier. We are, even though we're not going to be going out and specifically enforcing anything here, because the majority of what we're doing is voluntary conservation efforts, we have been specifically reaching out to some of our larger partners. Staff spoke to Wichita State recently, large campus, multiple campuses. They had asked about what they needed to do, where the rules applied, they want to be partners. We will be talking to the school district also. There are some larger corporate entities that have multiple locations in Wichita that we're going to reach out to directly, because they especially like the water a lot. And I think that's going to have some impact in making that direct contact to encourage voluntary conservation, to show them the information that we've got, and ask them to be a part of it. So that's absolutely a big part of what we're doing.
Gary, can you segregate water demand by district?
Well, I suppose we could, yeah. Sure, I mean, we can segregate it by just about anywhere we want, but we could do that by district.
We could have a competition. Who could reduce it the most?
If we barely use it, does that count?
Yeah?
I'm just saying. You'll suck the water out of the lawn?
You know, I would end on a note. I appreciate you bringing that up, because, you know, I started talking about this, and so I'll end it by saying, we really do want to see the community come together. We think this is a great opportunity to show what we can do. It's tough, it's a challenge. We've heard from people that value their yard, they value what they've planted, they don't want to see that go by the wayside. I think we heard from Matthew and Abby today, if you do it right, you can still make that work. We still highly recommend, don't plant anything new coming into this fall. But what I heard them talk about, the information that would be provided, is you can still keep those things alive. May not be quite like you want them to. My yard right now looks like it's about half gone, but it's still doing fine. It's hanging in there, and we'll just see what comes after that, so.
Just a couple of questions here real quick. Could you talk about the enforcement mechanisms with other municipalities? Is this going to be, if we do ever do get to mandatory restrictions? Is that going to be up to the municipality or the partner to enforce, or is that a county thing? What tools do we have to actually enforce?
Enforcement for, within City of Wichita proper, will be our responsibility. The drought response plan actually talks about what that might look like, who the partners would be. We've started looking at that. Needless to say, it's going to be a large undertaking, right? But if we need to get there, we'll get there. Our responsibility within Wichita for our wholesale customers, which is the 11 we talked about, including some other communities, they have to provide a plan to us, showing how they're going to do the same. So we're not going to be able to go out and enforce it in the other communities that are water districts, but they have to provide a plan that we approve to do that.
Okay, are there any exemptions for the new water rates and future restrictions that we aren't aware of? Like if water is central to your business, water parks and whatnot, any future restrictions? Are there exemptions for them, or are they held to the same standards?
So within our drought response plan, if we were to go to mandatory water restrictions, there are exemptions. Those businesses who their central part of their business, their economics of their business is driven by water use, they are exempt. So it talks about car washes, golf courses, part of running their business, obviously hospitals, dialysis centers, those are the last ones that ever go. Any businesses, and there is some subjectivity to that. The drought response plan includes an initial list. It ultimately is up to staff to make a recommendation to the manager what businesses apply. Nurseries, sod shops, companies, those are exempt. So even right now, our request for voluntary conservation to water one day a week, don't do anything new plantings, that would not apply to the business portion of any of those businesses that water is a central part of what they do.
Okay, so do you guys have a committee to set up that looks at who's going to be exempt from that in the future?
We can. I think our Internal Water Conservation Committee is a great place to start, has done a really good job. There's representatives from departments. Vice Mayor Ballard and Councilmember Tuttle are now on that committee. We would include staff and ultimately a recommendation to the city manager.
Okay, and...
But right now, there's, that's not in play with this being voluntary conservation request.
Right, right. Okay, so you said about 385 million gallons of water is gray water that goes through spirit?
Reuse from our wastewater treatment plant.
Yeah, right.
That, yeah, and I think they're, I don't know, the last time I saw a number, I think they're trying to use as much of that as they can.
Yeah, that's about, according to the chart, that would be about a third of the water usage that they have is recycled gray water. Are they the only business around that's utilizing the gray water?
They are at this point. Something we're always looking at, especially with new industry that might be coming to Wichita that's high water use. It's an expensive effort, right, to make that happen, the infrastructure that it takes. And then it's kind of hard to evaluate the long-term return on that investment. But if we, in a perfect world, we would locate new industry that's high water users next to our wastewater treatment facilities, right? So we're looking strategically, long-term, when we hear about businesses wanting to come our way, of thinking about those types of things. Some of the recent requests and the things that we've looked at through the partnership of trying to bring businesses to town that are high water use, that's the first place we started to focus was reuse and gray water. It doesn't always play out economically or feasibly to get it done, but we're trying to keep that out there.
Right, I believe that. I'm somebody who believes that these droughts are going to be coming in waves, and they're going to be longer and more intense than they have been in the past. I think we're already seeing that, so I'd like us to focus on wherever we can, kind of encouraging other businesses or participating and helping out with giving a supply of gray water, the option for them, just however we can, wherever we see that in their business model and going forward. Now, the last thing is, I've talked about this before, we're going to pump how many gallons of water out of the new water treatment plant during the testing cycle?
I don't know that I have that number in front of me, but we're going to try to keep that limited as far as duration of time that we need that. We need, it's necessary to test our facility at basically half the capacity for a short period of time. We are perfecting our commissioning and startup plan now. We're really close to having that ready to go. That's one of our priorities, to make sure that we get the enough water that we need to prove out that the plant's going to do what we need it to do, but also keeping conservation in mind. And I can get you that number, I don't have it with me, but we're trying as hard as we can to limit that amount of water.
Yeah, I'm just wondering if there is, and again, I'm bugging you on this one, I know, an option, people can bring down rain barrels or something and collect some of that water. I don't think it's suitable for drinking water necessarily, but if there's a way we can have the public come down and bring whatever they want to fill up, take back home, any options like that that we see.
Our problem is storage. Our problem is storage from the perspective of keeping things going, keeping the testing going, so we can get that plant online sooner than later. To be able to do that, we would really need to have onsite storage, so after we're done using that water for testing, we'd need to send it to somewhere else. Otherwise, if we try to somehow pull that water out of the plant, we're going to delay the process and prolong when we bring it online. I don't mind continuing to look at that. We talked about that before, and I appreciate the question. Right now, I don't think it's real practical to make that happen.
Yeah, just definitely see an opportunity there.
Sure.
All right. Thank you.
Gary, I just wanted to, oh.
Go ahead.
I just wanted to add on to something Councilmember Hole Hazel said. We had a golf course in a neighboring community, not within the City of Wichita, who reached out to us, and we went and met with them, and they're elected because they were interested in the gray water. What became the issue is it was going to cost several hundred thousand dollars for the infrastructure for that to happen?
It was several million.
Several million. And so, it wasn't going to be fair to put it on the City of Wichita, on our users, right? And the same with business. Gary made a great point, like, the best place industry could go, the high consumers of water is next to the sewage treatment plant, so that way, there isn't as much infrastructure build-out to happen. So, it's, I went being optimistic and then realized it's a lot more complicated because of just the infrastructure cost for it. But, I know that your staff really did an outstanding, you and your staff did an outstanding job of having all of that kind of laid out so that we could go and talk about the partnerships. So, thank you for those efforts, too.
Thank you.
Yeah, and I hear you. I'd like to see maybe adding on to the pipe, the current gray water pipe. And again, just seeing what businesses, what options they have. I'd love for some of our other more water-intensive businesses, some of our aircraft companies also to mirror what Spirit did there, so. I appreciate that. Thank you, Councilmember.
Gary, how long do you think it would take to see if this plan is working or not? And the reason I ask, I'm really not in favor of raising rates that much. Maybe if there's a time limit on it, maybe four months, six months, just to get that usage down, change people's habits. How long do you think it would take before you have an analysis to where if it's working or not working?
So, specific to what we're looking at for the tier-two and three rates, if the council is inclined to approve that initiative on August 8th, it would go into place September 1st. Historically, we still have seen an increase in water use in September from August, so I think we'd be able to tell even from that 30 days how much impact we've had. We hope, prior to even getting to that, that our messaging today, our call to action, our requests that we're doing, the things that we're doing on our end, that we'll start to see a reduction already. One of the things I was going to talk about on August 8th, and I can mention now, is we've got some flexibility on what we do with that, and what I think the best thing for us to do is if the council recommended moving forward with an increase of tier-in-two and three rates, we would want to see how the public responds and how well that works. We wouldn't have to keep it in place. Timing is not perfect here because historically, we would start to see a reduction in water use after September anyway. It's going to kind of depend on what the weather does, what the temperatures are, but I think we, I don't know that answer just yet. That's why we want to continue to evaluate this on a regular basis, watch what's happening. We would want to get through September and see what impact that has. And come back to the council.
Yeah, Gary, I'm sorry to interrupt, but if you look at our trends, there's still significant water use in October as well. If you were to ask me today what makes the most sense, I would like to track those rates and the impact they've had based on our historic use until the new water plant comes online in April. And at that point now, we have a lot more options in terms of treatment of groundwater, and that would be a good time to evaluate the rates.
Okay. Maybe through the end of March.
Thank you.
Let's reduce the tide of consumption by 10%?
Vice Mayor, I do want to thank the Wichita media for highlighting this problem and keeping it in front of the public. That has helped us in terms of getting the message out and people understanding the seriousness of the drought issue. So, with that, that's all we have, Vice Mayor.
They really buoyed the issue.
We don't want to water down this issue, do we?
No.
No.
This would be a great time to end our meeting.